Did you try any Travis's salsa? It was good.
Yeah. Oh, I got to go do his time card, I forgot. I sent it back to him.
Yeah, I think they had to do Zeke's over, but he hasn't done it yet.
I was gonna do it. So we're not doing warrants today, right?
What?
Warrants?
No.
Okay, it's eleven o'clock, so we're gonna get started. I'd like to welcome everybody out to this special public meeting of the Board of UNA County Commission. It's December twenty-seventh, two thousand and twenty-two at eleven AM. We're in the commission chambers, and I would ask if you would silence your phones. We're gonna start off with a prayer for Matt Kazeer and the pledge from Ty Duncan. And no Matt's here. Jeremy Kazeer. Thanks, Jeremy.
......................................................................................................................................................................................................
Thank you, Jeremy. Thank you, Ty. Appreciate that. Next item on the agenda is approval of minutes for the September nineteenth, two thousand and twenty-two, and December... Oh, why is there one for September? Is that one we never approved?
That missed.
Okay. So from September nineteenth, two thousand and twenty-two, and December nineteenth, two thousand and twenty-two.
Mr. Chairman, I'm making a motion that we approve the minutes from September nineteenth, two thousand and twenty-two, and December nineteenth, two thousand and twenty-two with the acknowledgement that one got overlooked in September, so...
Okay. Have a motion?
Second.
Have a motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Motion passed. Next is the construction approval for Western Park Ice Rink and Amphitheater.
Morning, Jess.
Is that better? Jess from UNA County Facilities. We're on the agenda here to either... You had a chance to look over the bid amounts for the amphitheater and also the ice rink. And so we're here to see about an approval for that project.
Okay. Yeah, I've looked over... I looked over what you left me. Went through it, and I think, you know, there's a few cuts that will be made, that need to be made, but it looks good.
Okay. And yeah, it was just making sure we had enough funding to do it, and so that we can move forward.
Okay. Have any comments?
So commissioners, we would need approval to move forward with BHI. They're already as the construction manager and general contractor. That contract's already been in place for a couple months now.
Yeah.
But now we have the pricing, and then to approve maximum amount for the project. And then we'll keep working with them and get it all dialed in.
Maximum amount or the amount that we will put in the budget?
The budget amount.
The budget amount.
Amount in the budget.
Then if there's extras come up, that's gonna be...
Yeah, or as if we find... So for example, in the price quote, they are quoting how much it costs to... For demolition and dirt work and stuff like that. And we've talked about if there's anything that we can do in kind that would help keep those costs down, those are things that we can shed off the cost estimate quite readily.
Yeah.
So there's things like that, but it would be setting that budget amount. And then...
Then we can start working on it.
And then telling BHI to move forward.
And there's a lot of moving parts in all of this, so there's room to save, there's room...
Yeah, as we looked across, we identified four or five line items that was fairly high that needed... And then there was two line items that they just give you a certain amount to...
Yeah, there was an allowance.
Allowance, and those aren't... Shouldn't meet those allowances, so should be fine.
Yeah. So anyways, that's...
Yes, we appreciate the work, the hours that you and Tracy and everybody stuck into this, you know?
John.
John and boy John, and I think we've done our due diligence on it, you know, and it's went through it. It's... It... A lot of work's been involved. Mel, you know, you just keep on going, forget people, but it's been great.
Well, thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, so I'll entertain a motion.
Mr. Chairman, I move to approve construction for the Western Park Ice Rink and Amphitheater to go ahead and get started.
Yeah, I'll second it.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. Any further comments?
It's a question on the, is the amount part gonna be down below when the budget adoption? Or do we need that as part of this motion? Yeah, it'll have to be in part of it.
Oh, the amount?
Uh huh.
What was the amount?
Seven point one.
Seven point one million dollars? Okay, so I was under... For some reason, I thought this was just the starting, not the complete, but... Okay, in the amount, amend the motion to approve it in the amount of seven point one million dollars.
Okay.
Second.
Have a motion and a second. Any other comments? Mike?
I just wondered if there's a fiscal funding clause in this contract?
When we get to the actual contracts with BHI, we'll have that fiscal funding.
Okay.
But fiscal funding, we put it in there basically just to let the other people know, but it's always... And if it's not funded by a legislative body, then the project doesn't go.
Thank you.
Nothing goes quite frankly.
Okay, thanks, Mike.
Okay. So we have a motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Motion passed. Okay. Resolution twelve twenty-seven, two thousand and twenty-two, R. One, elected official salary Anybody have anything on that?
The only thing I would say, and I think this was in the back of the room, last week when this came up, there was... It was brought up by... There was discussion that, well, we didn't consider everybody. We were only looking at the attorney. And then it devolved into a discussion about this, that, and the other things. So we went ahead and did some... We... All we had was anecdotal information about who made what. And so we spent last week checking with the third and fourth-class counties around, both through the county and then through UAC, so that we could get the right number. And said you can see where the... From the pages. When it comes to fourth-class counties, the... Our... Our elected officials are well above, you know... You almost have to do a median on this as opposed to an average. But you also remember that these numbers were set, what, seven years ago? So these numbers have been in place for seven, and some of these new ones that are treasurer, recorder, assessor, auditor, commissions, those... These are showing increases, their increases for next year. So we've been ahead quite some time. And even as you go with... Compare against the third-class counties, which have forty thousand to one hundred and seventy-five thousand people, UNA County is still quite high. So I guess the... At this point, I would say that it may not be time to do... These all have to be taken, you know, one at a time. I don't think it's one of those things you look at, I mean, clearly. If we... I think I'd done this some years ago. If we had followed the... This is the elected official salaries in two thousand and fifteen. If we'd have continued at the annual rate of inflation, there isn't one that wouldn't be at or around one hundred and twenty thousand. Instead, we moved to a third, a fourth-class county. So in accordance with the law, or the recommendation, or the discussion from the law, if there is any movement, most of these should go down. But that's not something that I did... I didn't work the math on that. I just know what the facts are, and the facts were not what was... What we were hearing a lot of last week. So with that in mind, I really don't have... I don't have anything for an elected official's resolution across the board.
I'd like to see us just table it.
The only one that we do... Well, that's gonna come up in the budget, so we might have to come back to this. The attorney's already in this line that we put up. That one was already done last week. And then a year, year and a half ago, when we was talking about the sheriff's departments, we put a wage sheet together that they are following. And so, just so you know, in the increases that we are doing for market adjustments on the bottom of the... On the bottom of the adjustment, in that... In the budget, the sheriff is in that along with the rest of some of the employees that we're doing.
And that was the two dollars across the board.
That was two dollars.
Across the board, employees that were getting it.
But other than that, we could... The rest of them, we can talk about whatever. I just wanted to let you know that was in the budget, so... So with that, we'll table the elected officials' resolution for right now. Budget adoption, resolution number one, two, two, seven, two, zero, two, two, R. Two, the two thousand and twenty-three budget adoption.
Here's the resolution, the copy of the budget.
Okay, so commissioners, what I've put together here is I've started with the tentative budget amount, sixty-three million, two sixty-two, seven fifty. And then any adjustments that have been made to the final budget are spelled out here on the line. So I can go through the material ones, or any ones you have questions on, if you'd like me to do that. You'd like me to go through those?
You can read them off. Let's just read them off, so everybody's aware of what was changed.
Okay. So in the tentative budget, there was a salary and benefit adjustment to put in. To begin with, that was taken out to get back to a baseline. That was one million nine, nine hundred nineteen thousand, six hundred and seventy-three. Then we added one hundred and fifty thousand to the justice court based on discussions with Vernal City. We also added, I think it was two hundred thousand in revenue. The courts are actually not costing this like they did before. So as Quinn Binion said in an earlier meeting, it's been a good thing for the county and the city. GIS equipment, we put seventy-five thousand in their budget this year, thinking they could probably get a truck purchased for one that was in an accident. They weren't able to do that, so we've added it to next year. The attorney's office has a contract that's been approved with SML Strategic. That's put in for a hundred thousand, one hundred thousand, three twenty. The attorney also has an outside attorney line item that we've added a hundred and fifty thousand dollars to. General miscellaneous, special expenditures, there's in addition to five hundred and forty-one thousand, five sixty-seven. Buildings and grounds, minus two thousand dollars, and that was because I keyed it in wrong, caught that when I went back for my final review, so they may have to have a budget opener somewhere down the road. Corrections, needed taser and body scanner expenses, twenty-four thousand, one hundred. Buckskin Hills Marketing, we moved that from Buckskin Hills to Travel and Tourism, thirty thousand dollars. Buckskin Hills had a capital project approved in the current year for four hundred and seventy-five thousand dollars that they have not been able to do yet, and so the whole project's still outstanding, so we put it in the two thousand and twenty-three budget for four hundred and seventy-five thousand. The cemetery, based on discussions with Vernal City, now it went down by seventy-five thousand. The grants department, based on discussions with them, I'm gonna skip those first two. We took out a hundred thousand, twenty-eight thousand, thirty-one hundred. And then we added the purchase of five new trucks for the road department and to buy out of eight graders for one point two million and one point four million. Let's see. Economic development, this was again based on communications from Vernal City. The county's already approved a pickleball participation in a pickleball court, geothermal study, and a traffic light at Discovery. Those came up to forty-five thousand, so those were added. Transfers went up because there's money being transferred mainly to Western Park for the amphitheater. The sheriff's outreach program and search and rescue, we added another seven thousand based on the sheriff's input. Assessing and collecting, a decrease of nine hundred ninety-seven thousand, eight hundred. We... In the tentative budget, there would have been a tax increase if we would have gone with what was presented in the tentative budget, so that tax increase was pulled out. Tourism and marketing, that's the thirty thousand we took out of Buckskin Hills. Jensen Center Office Supplies, down twenty-three hundred. The Food and Convention Center Transfer, a hundred thousand, went up by a hundred thousand. The Food Chamber went up by six thousand. ARPA, there was a hundred fifty-eight thousand, five hundred in the tentative budget. That money's all been expended, and we don't need it in the two thousand and twenty-three budget. B-Road Billings went up by thirty-eight thousand. Airport contribution went up two hundred thousand. Debt Service, because of the payoff of the geo-debt, went down by two point two million, four hundred and sixty-five thousand, seven hundred dollars. The Care Center, when they passed their budget, they had a million dollars budgeted to come out of the interest income, which will be more than the interest income, but it'll start getting into the principal most likely. So we increased it to the million by adding four hundred thousand. The Western Park Ice Rink and Amphitheater project was put in at seven point one million dollars. Had to increase the tort insurance by three thousand to cover the bill that we'd received for next year. Cemetery in Vernal City, capital expenditure decreased fifteen thousand dollars. That's based on Vernal City's budget. And then the salary and benefits, there was a two-dollar adjustment or a market adjustment. And that was added at a cost of one million, four hundred and ninety-four thousand, nine dollars. So the final budget ends up at seventy-four million, six fifty-six, two twenty-three.
Mark, would you revisit that, the Care Center four hundred thousand?
Yes.
Because, I mean, that is in the Health Special Service District, is it not?
Their budget, the Health Special Service District is part of their budget.
Okay.
It's just a component of it. And also in their budget, they budget the interest income from the twenty million dollars, roughly, that the county has from collecting the sales tax in prior years. They... Their board approved a million dollars to make... I don't know if it... I didn't look at their budget that close, but I would assume to make it balance, that they needed to add more money, more revenue. If they do spend the million, it will start eating into the principal, depending on interest rates. I mean, they are going up, so maybe they'll... Maybe they'll get close.
Can... Is that a problem that can be fixed with mineral lease money?
Yeah, I think they could... If they had more mineral lease money, they could make that shift between the two.
Okay.
You want to back that out, or you want it to be?
Well, no, there's nothing... Because we did up the amount going to them. I don't know if this was orchestrated with that change or not, but at least if it's sitting there, it is available, but I'm hoping that they won't go to it first.
Yeah, I don't think that they withdrew everything they had budgeted this current year, but I have to go back and revisit that for sure. Did they?
Well, last year, they only had, yeah, eight hundred, eighty-three thousand, something. This, now they're one hundred and sixty-six thousand per month, so they'll be better positioned to deal with that.
They dip into the principal last year at all.
I haven't done a complete look on that. I know they took six hundred thousand out of them. We haven't received all the interest for the year.
Hopefully, pull it out if more than just interest came out.
Okay. I have a little bit more conversation on the salary and the benefit adjustment, and so people understand that one. We've taken a lot of time. We went through individual departments, and we've made some market adjustments throughout, and we finished a few more up today. There's... I mean, we've done the attorney's office, we have done... We did some in community development, we've done some in the treasurer's office and the recorder's office, and some others we've looked at, I don't know. But anyway, we've made those adjustments that are different than the two dollars.
Correct.
And so some of the departments, as I look through what the requests were, were different. And I'm gonna just take a truck driver, for example, right now. We've seen that there's needs to be an adjustment for that, for those departments and for those positions because of what the economy is doing right now to that. So as we went through these, we've made some individual adjustments which are different than this, and then these other folks will get this adjustment, so...
Okay. And we'll just have to do... I mean, as we went through it this morning, there were some adjustments made that aren't reflected in the budget, but at a subsequent budget opener, those can be addressed.
Okay.
I think we cleared up... I think we finally cleared up all the two sixty.
Yeah, it's my understanding that there are no employees that would still have an obligation under two sixty.
The way it should be. And we've addressed those now, all of them?
All of the... Yeah, all that I'm aware of. I think HR said that we've got them all.
Have we? Okay. As of this morning, the stuff that we... Okay. Okay. Mike?
Commissioners, I do feel the need to make sure we get a budget adopted today, so my comments are going to be... I don't want to stop the budget from being adopted, because I know the need of getting one adopted. But first of all, I've been watching the budget changes that have been happening last week. This has changed even from Friday afternoon. Friday, he had an eight million dollar tax increase in here, which I thought was finally you guys are recognizing the need to make up for the three point four million dollar tax reduction that's been made the last three years. He is doing transfers from... He being Mark is doing transfers from General Fund to Western Park, that I'm glad to see there's a fiscal funding clause, so the next governing body can actually decide if that money is available to do that. Again, Mr. Caldwell has no authority to be doing this. Next thing, this budget should be presented to you on a buy/fund basis and presented to the public by fund what this is. He's got totals, we do have... We have no idea what the General Fund, Municipal Service Fund, from what he's provided to the public, from this record, of what the actual individual departments are. So I can tell by looking at this, he's made changes in the budget in multiple departments that I'm sure no department head was consulted per the code. They must be consulted before budget changes are made. So those are my thoughts. And again, the budget needs to be adopted, and we'll go from there.
Sure.
Just looking through here, I don't believe, other than the salaries and benefits, that there are any adjustments made to a department that I didn't speak with the department. Most of them were brought to me by the department. And I believe I'm operating under the direction of the commission, and that's where my authority comes from.
Yeah, that's what I was under the impression, and maybe that's what I was gonna say, is I was under the impression that the budget was the commission's after the tentative budget, and that you was working under our authority. And the adjustments that was made up to today was by request of us, not by his decision-making.
With that comment being made, commissioners, I'd like to know when that was advertised as a public hearing to discuss that budget changes, because you're not allowed to discuss budget without a party in a public meeting. Just a comment.
Have a comment?
No other... I think individual comments between... If I had comments, discussions with Mark, they were my particular groups, what have you. I don't remember saying, "I want this, this is what's going to be approved." I also can't help but note that I've had the opportunity to review past budget processes prior to Mark, and we failed miserably at following the law on those. I'm not saying that failing to follow the law is... Makes future following right, but it's hard to get anybody... It's hard to get anybody interested in those kind of things. I think in the end, what it still comes down to is what we have now is the... We have gone through... what we have now is the, we have gone through, we have reduced the tax burden to citizens of the county. We have reduced debt, we have addressed, uh, market increases in salary, and we're still having enough money to operate the, with the proposed funding. What, what we have left can deal with any emergency that we have seen, anything more than what we've seen any time in the past. So I actually am seeing a, a very good, I'm, I'm seeing a very good example of responsible financial management and budget execution, so that's what I'm seeing. And as far as, I, I think we've always had this issue with, um, between the tentative and the final, that we have the ability to discuss what came in, in the tentative, because it's, I mean, it's really, um, kind of aspirational. It doesn't have a lot of, um, basis in fact. And so we sit down and do that, and then we have this meeting. And the tentative budget satisfies the need for the public hearing, and then we sit down and we take, um, what we've got. And if we need to consult, when, I know we've done this many times, about every year I've ever seen, even when, when, um, the clerk auditor was doing that, there's no, I don't, is there an increase in budget? Or is it, we're still dealing with the same amount that we had?
Is there an increase in the budget?
Yeah, did we, did we just move it around, what did we do?
Uh, there's an, there's an increase, there, there's, uh, five point eight million dollars coming in from, uh, ARPA-type funding.
Right, but we, we addressed that when that money became available. Okay, all right.
And then on the, uh, five new trucks and the buyout on the graders, that, you're gonna go, that's on the CIB list?
Yeah, well, I, I think we need to do that, which we'll, should be able to do, is the, you know, the million two for the purchase of five new trucks and the buyout of the graders for a million four. I think that we need to, we've gotten that on the list, and at that time, I think we can go out there. I think we can get fifty percent of that money grant, money, so, you know, forty percent, fifty percent. I think that we can, so, you know, there's a, there's a, another million bucks there, I think that we can very easily get from CIB to pay for those, you know, help pay for those conservatively, so.
Okay. Just thinking.
As, as far as, uh, laying out what's in each budget, the statute just says that the commission shall adopt the budget by resolution, and, and she'll make changes based on input from the public hearing and any other input that they have. So I've attached to the resolution, the, the budget, and you have that there.
Is that the same one that's on there?
Are you gonna allow public comments on the budget?
No, a comment was taken, I think in November twenty-first.
Well, I'll put it up for a motion, see what we get.
Mr. Chairman, I'd like to make a motion that we approve the resolution number twelve twenty-seven twenty-two R two, twenty-twenty-three budget adoption, as presented.
Okay, we have a motion?
Second.
Have a motion and a second. Any other discussion? Seeing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye, motion passed.
Thank you.
Thank you. The only other thing that we need to do is, is like I'd mentioned before, on resolution on the elected official salary, the sheriff's is in the budget for the two dollars. So if you wanna add that to the resolution, you need to. And that will make it stay up with his plan that we did a year ago, when it was a last three county.
We, we have to go back up and revisit?
Yep, so I, should have been after, that's why I just tabled it for then.
Okay.
And I, but I brought up why, and then if you wanna do it, great, if not, it's fine too. But there was no reason to talk about it if it wasn't in the budget, so.
No, in fact, it's, um, I, I think it's probably, um, the need is there. What I'm, again, this whole exercise was kind of, was amusing in a, in a sad sort of way, about how difficult it is to find out just how much public officials are paid. It is really, try and call people, and I don't wanna talk about it. That seems like the first thing that ought to be mentioned, uh, should be about the easiest thing to find, is what do you pay in your public officials? So, um, with that, I would go ahead, if we're, if we're reinstituting, or if you're reviving resolution twelve dash twenty-seven twenty-two R one official salary increase, I would move to increase sheriff's salary by two dollars per hour.
Is that, but that's covered in the budget already, we're not doing both.
Yeah, no.
No, but we, we do have to, um, because it is a, an elected official.
So it has to be a resolution for the budget to take.
All right, I'll second it.
Okay, we have a motion and a second, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye, motion passed. Next item is adjournment.
I'd make that motion.
We're adjourned.